Good evening and welcome to the May 4, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Giudino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas is absent, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 27, 2000. Motion approved, so moved.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of the utility companies to discuss double polls.
Gentlemen. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Stan Jusovich, Verizon, with offices at 63 High Street in Davis.
Sir.
Dan Camaro with National Grid with offices at 170 Medford Street in Malvin.
Thank you. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gents, I think this is the third or fourth time we've had you up here. And I know we used to get a report. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the reason we haven't gotten a report is because they're revamping the system so that we get more information. Have you got anything on when we're going to see the system? Because it seems like we're going in the wrong direction here.
Well, Counselor Riordan, we just, I just got access to the system today. My training doesn't take place until mid-May. But I was able to have someone run a report so that, you know, any questions that you might have, we can at least identify the polls that you have in question. I can't speak for Grid, but I know that our people in the field train first, which makes the greatest amount of sense, because they're the ones that are entering the data and making sure that, you know, the system is up to date. In addition to the new system, there was a survey done in Revere so that all information that appears in the new system will be accurate and up to date.
Well, I have a couple of, just going back many, many, many months that I can think of offhand, and those are the two at Irving and, South Irving and Vane, as they're right across diagonally across from the number 4420 and 3406 are the poll numbers, I believe the Verizon polls, obviously.
A Councilor on Irving Street?
South Irving, South Irving and Vane, at the corner of South Irving and Vane. I don't know what their location would be on the, there would either be South Irving or Vane, obviously. But I'm looking at a note that I had here from back in September of 14, and I know they were in that condition well before that, and they're still like that. So, I mean, it's, and the worst thing about not having the information is I could look at it and say, find out who's responsible. At this point, I can't, I have no idea who's responsible at this point where we, while we are, where we are as we stand.
You have the poll numbers?
I'm sorry? I think, I believe, the two at Vane and South Irving are 4420 and 3406. That's what I have written in my note here, and I think that's it.
I mean, I... Dan's pointing out that the one on South Irving is Fire Department.
Is what?
Fire Department needs to transfer.
So, Fire Department?
Yeah, on the South Irving Street.
Well, like I said, there's two on South Irving and Vane I know of.
Right, and the other one that you mentioned, 4420?
Yeah.
That's us.
That's you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've got them, and they've been sticking there since Hector was a pup. Is that what they used to say? Counselor Zambudo, Hector was a pup, is that the saying?
I don't know.
I don't know what that means, but I heard, I've heard it before, and it means it's a long time. So, I'd like to get them done. I'm sure there's many others that like to get them done. But I really, have you got any thoughts as to when we might have everybody trained on this new system?
I really can't speak for others, but we're in the process, as I said, of training from the field up. I suspect by the June meeting I'll be able to generate a report that I can transmit electronically to the council.
Okay, that's great. Now, will that have, in addition to the information that we had before, will that have the critical information as to when the poll goes in the ground in the first place?
Poll set. I don't know, only because I've just seen this for the first time, but if that's available, we'll give it to you.
Yeah, because that's the most critical information. I mean, we can't, we can't establish what is a reasonable amount of time from the time it was set to the time it was, the old poll was removed, unless we know when we started. It's just impossible for us to say, well, you know, it's been there for two months or three months or four months. There's got to be some criteria for time removal. Granted, wintertime makes things difficult, obviously. So, if a poll goes in in November, you know, you can't expect it to come out as quickly as it, the other poll to come out as quickly as you'd like. But at the same time, at least we'd know what went in in November, and we'd know why it's been there for six months when, you know, we come to May and it's not removed yet.
We have, what I've seen on the larger picture, though, we've been able to capture some attachments that have been previously unidentified and still remain unidentified. But by that, like, the school department has attached to a number of polls. They're not listed. We've captured that in our information, but we still need the school department in all of this city to step up and say, you know, we're going to identify, we're going to license these locations so that they can be, you know, again, there's an understanding that if you put it on the poll, you take the opposite poll.
So, the theory, your theory here is that some of these polls have been pirated, so to speak, by various municipal bodies or et cetera?
Or others.
Yeah, or others, yeah.
Yeah.
I suppose, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Any other counselors? Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we have, the last, last list I have is from November. I guess that's when they started to work on the system. Go down the line now. I had given you poll 392. I don't know what the status is on that. It's at the corner of Ocean Ave and Beach Street by the Banana Boat, and I didn't see it on the list, but there is a double poll existing that has no wires on it. So, I don't know who owns it.
That was the one that, on Revere Beach Parkway?
No, Ocean Ave.
On Ocean Ave?
No, the one I gave you in Parkway, we'll get to.
Ocean Avenue. All right, there's a number of them there.
Yeah, there's 392, but I don't know if it's under a Beach Street address or a Ocean Ave address, if it's even on there, because it wasn't on there in November.
The 92 on Beach Street, that must be...
392, this is.
On Beach Street, 92?
No, I have 392. The actual number on the poll is 392. I know that for sure.
Okay, may, may have been...
But it hasn't been on the list at all.
Okay.
So...
We have one at 92, so...
No, it's, that's a different part of Beach Street. So, if you can follow up on that.
I'm thinking that it may be recorded as 92 now.
I don't, I'm just going by what's on the poll.
Okay, no problem, we'll check.
Yeah, at the corner of Ocean Ave, right by the Banana Boat.
If it's the one that is listed, it's Revere Fire Department, no?
Yeah, no, I know this has nothing on it.
Okay, then it may be that they haven't made the entry. Part of the problem we're going to have is making sure that the entries that are done by the municipality, that those individuals are trained, so...
As soon as they get trained.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I think that's National, I need to detail, that was National Grid, that was a National Grid poll, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know. I can't answer it, because it's not even on any list. I'm looking for status of poll 1737 on Charles, Charles Ave.
Charles Ave.
Is it, is it in your ballpark, or does it have to come down?
No, it was on the list.
Oh, really? Okay, because this just shows a C on this.
For us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then James Street, poll 727. That's a National Grid item, and it's been like that for four years. There's a double poll there, you know, the electric has to be moved, the street light has to be transferred over. Status on poll 619-1 on Kimball Ave? That you also still?
No.
Okay. Poll 345 on Ocean Avenue, status on that one? That you also, National Grid? And we talked about poll 48 on the Revere Beach Parkway, Stan?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, shows master electric. We have poll 591 on Shirley Avenue.
Shirley Avenue, 591?
591, right.
Yeah.
And I thought, you know, I thought that was, electric was done already on it, so it may be.
Yeah.
Poll 414 on the VFW Parkway?
That has a, that has a unidentified attachment on it?
Right now, it's nothing on it, because they just worked on it this weekend.
Okay.
So, that's ready to go, and right above it's...
Who is working on it?
National Grid, I believe.
Okay.
And right above that, 743 on the VFW Parkway?
Yeah.
And the status on that one, who do you show?
Yeah, that's a clear poll.
Okay. And that's it for me, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Novoselfsky. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the absence of having updated information as of November, the only thing I'm concerned with right now is that poll that was cut in half in front of, I don't have, I don't have the poll number, in front of the old Maggio's Restaurant, now it's DiMillo's, and it is a convenience store right there on Revere Street, and you have a poll with another poll and splice them right in the middle of it. And I was informed that we would get that taken down as soon as possible. No information on that?
Yes, there are a number of them on Revere Street.
And the other one in front of the Parvius School? Corner of Revere Street and Roosevelt?
We have a number on Revere that are, again, non-licensed catchies, so I don't know if that would be it, and there's nothing on Roosevelt, so...
Right near the school?
It's right near the school, Parvius School.
Right.
School may be still attached, so...
And how do we, how do we rid the poll of that?
The school department, that has to have their contract.
So, then now, now we're dealing with a different entity. It's the first time I'm hearing that the school department has to take part in this process. Always...
Well, actually, about a year ago, we identified that poll as having, we identified that, that school as having an attachee that was more than likely the school department, and that's over a year ago.
Stan, this is the first I've heard of this, and I know my colleague Jessica Janino is also interested in that, because she gets calls on it.
Right.
And have you heard of any involvement with the school to remove these?
I only remember that happening in one instance, and it was with the high school. It wasn't this poll that I believe, but I do remember.
Okay. So, we need to get in, I need to get in touch with the school department to alert them to the fact that they have to remove their wiring from that poll?
That's correct.
And they will be, is it ball and court and anyone else? Is anyone else in ball and court in that?
Well, once they come off, it may be Comcast, and then finally us.
Don't blame the guy who's not here, is that the way it goes, Stan?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it may be, they may not be on it, I'm not sure.
I understand, okay.
I mean, there's a protocol, as you know.
Thank you, Stan, I appreciate it, thank you. Thanks, Stan.
Mr. President, through you to the members.
Yes.
If it all possible in this new system to put street addresses with these for your purposes, we'll see if we can't do that, so not only will you have the poll numbers, but also a street address, which would probably go a long way to identifying, okay, which poll are we discussing?
I agree. I've got one for you tonight that has a street address but not a poll number, so I'll give you that in a little while. Counselor Guanasso? Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have an updated list on the double poll, so I can't, I have no information on that. But as I mentioned, you, Dan, National Grid, on Sager Street by the Whalen School, the I believe you did, you did the whole, the whole length of the school and all the way down to as far as, I believe, Joey Road. And I've been complaining about, ever since they did it, they, you subcontracted that work. That was not your workers, that was either Deveraux or, I forget the company that did it. But it's, I've had several motions to get it fixed, and I know Counselor Janino had a motion to have it fixed. It's at the point now where it's got to be a priority, especially the whole Joey Road and Sager Street, because of bottom out on, on it. So, I'd appreciate it if you really stressed the importance of getting that done, probably.
Is this a trench that goes across the road?
No, it's just a square right on the top of Joey, Joey Road. So, I think they might have ended there or whatever. The streets, Joey Road, my street, Johnny Road, we don't have any gas, so all those streets went with, none of them have gas. But they, they went down on that side, so maybe they, they connected some houses on the opposite side of the school, or came on, you know, so they had some trenches. But they got one long trench along the school, and then they got those boxes like it every so often. But the one on the top of Joey Road is really, has to be fixed. Thank you, thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is more on actions that are taken when a pole is struck in a case of a car hits a pole and it comes down. How do you, what measures are taken, and like, what is the process? Do you have a systems in place to identify if a pole is a, has a lamp on it, and to ensure that when it's, the pole is resurrected, that it's, they put up a pole, replace it with a, a pole with a lamp? Because there, there have been instances where polls have been replaced, they've had lamps, and they were replaced with polls without lamps.
Well, if a, if a pole is hit in Revere, and both the National Grid and Verizon are on the pole, then it's Verizon's responsibility to come out and actually set the pole. We're there as well, because as soon as the pole is set, you know, we're, you know, we're transferring, you know, to the new pole. So, you know, if the light is broken or in any way damaged, you know, we certainly replace it on the scene. There are poles that don't have lights, so if it was knocked down, didn't have a light, we wouldn't be putting one back up there. But certainly if it, if it did have a light, we should be, you know, transferring if it wasn't damaged, or replacing if it was damaged.
In the past, there have been a couple lights around the area of American Legion where a car struck the pole, they replaced it with a pole without, without a lamp, so...
If you...
I did give that information as well as off the, Counselor Guanasso. It hasn't been resolved yet.
Okay, if you, if I, I don't recall if it...
Stanton Ave.
Okay, if I can somehow get that information.
Sure.
Because we, all we have to do is check on the building register and see if this, the city's paying for light, then we'll certainly put it back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. Are there any other counselors that want to questions?
I, I have a couple of, one issue and a question. 369 Rice Avenue, I got a call from a constituent a few days ago. One of the days was, I guess, was particularly windy or breezy along the water there, and they told me that the pole in front of the house was swaying, and they were somewhat concerned over the safety with regard to that. And I wonder if perhaps a crew could go out there and just check that out, make sure that the pole is in fact safe?
I'm Rice Avenue?
369 Rice Avenue. Now, I have one, one question now. When a pole is hit by a motor vehicle, is there some type of remuneration that goes to National Grid or Verizon or whoever is on that pole for the, from the insurance? Let's say a pole is knocked down. Obviously, there's a tremendous cost in replacing that pole and getting the services back on. And my question is, is there any monies from an insurance company? Is there any follow-up by either of the entities on that pole?
I believe that if there is a, you know, attributed cause like an accident, that Verizon does pursue the, you know, the cause of the accident.
I would hope so. It's, it's, you know, it's property damage, yeah. And the reason I ask that question is because on many of these polls, we have, fire alarm is on there, and that results in a cost to the city to send someone out there to replace whatever wiring was damaged that is connected with fire alarm. So, I guess my question is, would it be possible for Verizon in that instance, if fire alarm is on that pole, to notify the city of Revere, particularly the Fire Department, the Fire Chief, with regard to the information of the vehicle, so that we can go ahead and seek some...
I, I think that, you know, it should be done internally, just by forwarding police reports to the Fire Department.
Okay, yeah.
You know, that's the easiest way to do it.
Okay.
Because in some cases, our crews are more concerned with putting the pole in, and sometimes there is not the follow-up on recovery. But, you know, if there is someone that's alert and understands that there is a claimant that can be pursued in our insurance company, they'll turn that information over to our insurance company.
Okay, I would hope so, because my, again, my concern is, you know, making sure that the city gets whatever it can to, for reimbursement for the damage.
There's no question that actually, if the police department were to forward that information over to your legal department as well as the Fire Department, then a claim could be issued, you know, rather than trying to work through Verizon.
That's it, that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen, for appearing here this evening. I'm sure if my colleagues have any further concerns, they'll contact you directly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Calendar item number two, motion for reconsideration filed by Counselor Rigo on a motion relative to an ordinance amendment concerning the expenditure of grants.
Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I filed reconsideration, given that there was not a full council at the last meeting, and I'd like to call the roll.
Yeah, I, I just have one statement to make. You know, I, I really believe that the city, that the city council should be aware of any monies, and I'm not talking about, you know, $10,000 for, you know, equipment or something like that for the police or the Fire Department.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Point of information, Mr. President.
You can't speak on this.
Reconsideration is non-debatable. There's not supposed to be any discussion here.
All right, I just wanted to make my position clear. Call the roll, please, Ashley.
Shall the city council reconsider Council Order 15-095? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Riordan?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the motion to reconsider fails. Calendar item number three, report of the Appointments Subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had several individuals to various positions. The first is the reappointment of Arm Construction, 787 Notcher Road, Revere, as a licensed drain layer. That was voted out favorably. Next is reappointment of J. Marchese &amp; Sons Inc., 69 Norman Street, Everett, as a licensed drain layer. That was also, he was also voted out favorably. Reappointment of R. Sasso &amp; Sons Construction Inc., 73 Durolo Avenue, Revere, Mass., as a licensed drain layer. That was also voted out favorably. The next is reappointment of C. J. Darney Inc., that was placed on hold for non-attendance. There was also reappointment of E. B. Rotandi &amp; Sons, 21 Madison Street, Stonem, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of J. O'Brien &amp; Sons Inc., 5 Fern Street, Waltham, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of Mercurio Brothers Landscaping, that was placed on hold. Reappointment of LaMontaigne Brothers Inc., 37 Frederick Hill Road, Oxford, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of J. Aiken Contract &amp; Services of Chelsea as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Excuse me. Yeah, the reappointment of T. O. Search Inc., 20 Authority Drive, Fitchburg, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of Menino Construction Inc., of Lynn, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of C.R.L. Inc., 33A Mystic Avenue, Metford, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Appointment of Pelletier &amp; Melbury Corp., 129 Water Street, Davis, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Reappointment of Michael Slomich, 84 Summer Street, Revere, as a constable. That was approved. Reappointment of Anthony Peroni, 281 Crescent Ave, Revere, as to the Revere Resident Employment Mornington Committee. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of Michael A. Bonanno, Jr., 85 East Mountain Ave, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of Denise M. Anderson, 37 Isle Road, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was approved. Reappointment of Laurie Giadella, 29 Castle Road, Nahant, to the Cultural Council. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of Paul Agenzio, 245 Reserve Ave, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was approved. Reappointment of Carol Haney, 72 Fowler Ave, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was approved. Reappointment of Kathleen Heiser, 51 Endicott Ave, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was approved. Mr. President, I ask that all those that were approved be taken in one vote, unless there's any exceptions from the city council to do otherwise.
I have a counselor that wants this, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. ...
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no problem with these, there's five, there were five drain layers that had insurance issues, and that was Marchese, Sasso, GeoSearch, C.R.L., and Pelletier. Their insurance liabilities were not updated, and I'd like to make an addition to the motion that...
And I'd like to make an addition to the motion that those be contingent upon the presentation of updated insurance liability coverage.
Point to the council from Ward Two. Stated prior to the meeting, when you weren't there, Counselor, it was stated that each of these council orders offered out by these appointments would be approved with the provision that all the paperwork be in place after the city clerk does her homework on it and before she passes out the paperwork. None will be approved or given their paperwork unless it's all documentation in order. And I said -- and I also stated that they would be required to come back to appear before the Subcommittee. So I think that covers each and all of the concerns, that we make sure that each and everyone is properly insured and make sure the city of Revere is well taken care of. And I think the city clerk is going to do that. Is that agreeable, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Counselor Guanasso. I understand that. And number one, I'm not on that committee, so I really wasn't even required to be here if I didn't want to.
No, and I just mentioned that it was stated before you got there.
No, and I understand that, but I'm just, you know, reiterating, you know, my concerns, and I'm just trying to protect the city.
Valid point.
Thank you.
Counselor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think for the third time in a row, we've had this discussion about incomplete applications. Is it possible we could ask the mayor's office before he sends us these things to make sure the date on the bond is checked? Would that be maybe not a bad idea?
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, I think they probably aren't even aware of it, and I think if we got a message down to the mayor's office saying -- Precisely, I would suggest that, because this is three times in a row we've said the same thing. Fly. Thank you, Mr. President.
So on this motion, you want all these approved? All approved with the exception of five. With the exception of the five, pending any information that's required such as insurance. Okay. Ashley? Please.
On the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number four, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Counselor Rego?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Ways and Means Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon. There were three items on the agenda. We reported out two of those items. One item will be left in committee for discussion with the Finance Director, George Anzoni. The two items that were pulled out of committee and voted on favorably are item number 15-076, a communication from the mayor relative to a transfer request in the amount of $6,910 for a FEMA appeal. This is an amount of money that is going to our appeal of the federal flood map, remapping of the federal flood map. And the second item is 15-076, a loan order in the amount of $250,000 for the collection system improvements of CWSRF number 3955, as we discussed in committee. This is an amount of money out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund that will go to planning some improvements to our water and sewer system. The committee voted both of these items out, and I look forward to a vote and the affirmative from the full council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $6,910 from the general fund free cash account to the planning and community development contracted services account? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. And shall the city council approve the loan order in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of planning a fats, oils, and grease study? This is for CY 2015 CWSRF Planning Project number 3955. Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. I'm sorry, where's the -- any of the Ways and Means, please? Council President, is also a resolution that needs to be voted on for this loan order?
Fine.
Shall the city council approve the resolution for CWSRF Planning Project number 3955? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Communications?
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Miola Construction Corp., 157-165 Clark Ave., Chelsea, Mass., as a licensed drain layer.
Refer to Appointments Subcommittee.
Calendar item number six has been withdrawn from the mayor.
That's the fellow from Sargus, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Calendar item number seven?
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor requesting a residency waiver for Janice Ben Holcomb, 74 Wallace Street, Malden, Mass., for the position of junior library assistant.
We can vote on this, can't we?
Yes, you can.
Yeah. Take a roll call vote.
Shall the city council --
Mr. President, a point of information.
State your point.
Proper procedure would be to place this before the Appointments Subcommittee for debate and review.
Well, my feeling was that if the position is needed at the library, you know, but if you wanted to go to a --
Okay, if it's an emergency, okay, we can discuss it now, obviously, if you want to. But precedent has been set by previous people seeking residency waivers.
I don't have any problem with it. If you want to, send it to Appointments Subcommittee. We'll send it to Appointments Subcommittee.
If we need the person right away.
Mr. President, I think that, you know, we all know that they're desperate for help down there.
That's my point.
And the mayor did say that they really need this woman right away. So I think if we can, you know, she's certainly qualified, and if we can do it tonight, I think it'd be a better --
Is that agreeable, Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Janino?
Thank you. I wouldn't have a problem with it, except it's not a resident, and I would like to meet this person who's not a resident before we immediately give a residency waiver, which we seem to be handing out fairly easily. So it's something I definitely have an issue with, and I would like to see go to committee just because, you know, it's one thing if it's someone that's known in the community and someone we've worked with, and another issue when it's a new person coming into our community regardless of, you know, the situation. We want them to find help, and we want them to be in a good position, but, you know, it's our duty to look into this, and I would like to see that. But if it's going to be voted on, it's going to be voted on. Thank you.
What is -- Counselor Riordan?
Mr. President, I tend to agree with Counselor Janino in some regard, but once again, I -- in the hopes of not being considered a gadfly of sorts, we consistently offer exceptions to this rule, and wisely so. But the problem is, I think we need to start thinking about paring down this residency requirement to not include professional people especially. It's fine when you're talking about entry-level people. I have no problem with that. But we're asked to do more exceptions than we ought to do than to do appointments sometimes in some of these, again, technically qualified positions. So that's something I'm going to say every time we do this. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Move the committee.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the DCR to replace the missing lampposts in the area of, that should read, Bickford Avenue and the Lynn Way.
Yes, this is a streetlight lamppost that's been out for quite a while, and I would like the mayor to send the communication to DCR to have that replaced as quickly as possible. That is a very heavily traveled area now with all of the traffic using the boulevard, and in its present condition, it could possibly be a danger to the residents down there. On the motion, all in favor?
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the Suffolk County Work Crew to clean the area around Mills Avenue Jug Handle.
Thank you. I am totally disgusted with the turnaround down there. Anyone driving through our city or to the residents down there, and they look over on the right, that jug handle, there's nothing but trash there. And as a matter of fact, I even put a motion in last year, and the trash is still there. So I can't possibly imagine why we can't get the Suffolk County Maintenance Crew down there to clean that up and any other areas along 1A, because 1A has become a thorough fear for people coming to our city. We want our city to look nice, so we take pride in our city. So I would hope that that would be done as quickly as possible. On the motion, all in favor, so ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Patch that the following ordinance amendment relative to the regulation of dogs be ordered to a public hearing.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is long overdue in the city. First of all, we got to keep the city in line with the state updated dog law passed in 2012. And unfortunately, in the city, people don't take dog licenses seriously. We are actually the lowest in the area for charging for dog license. $5 for a neutered dog or animal, and $10 for intact. And this is for the public safety, for more restrictions on dogs, and I think it's well overdue. And also, it's in anticipation for, hopefully, we're going to get a dog park in the Wart Six area, and we'll have to use some of, probably some of the increased revenue for update, up care. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Zambudo, do you have anything to add?
I think that, you know, I'll say most of my comments, I'm sure this is going to my committee, the Legislative Affairs Committee. Obviously, Counselor Patch mentioned that we need to comply with the state law that was passed in 2012, and it's long overdue for some increases in the fees. So that's it. Thank you.
Legislative Affairs. Public hearing.
There's one late motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the Traffic Commission change the following ordinance to have no parking on Winthrop Place on the northerly side. This is to amend Schedule 8 of Title 10, parking restrictions generally by adding the following: Winthrop Place on the northerly side from Hitchbourne Street, the entire length, no parking anytime.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was requested by some of the neighbors down on this short street. There's only five houses on this street, and when they come out of their driveways, parking on that no-building side, when people park there, they can't get out of their driveways. So that's the reason for this, and everybody has driveways there, so there shouldn't be a problem with it. So I hope it's passed tonight. Thank you.
Any other counselors? This will be referred to the Traffic Commission. This council will stand adjourned until May 18, 2015.